We have a deputy investigator by the name of Scullion.
Yes, sir.
S U L L I O N.
Justice for all.
Eternal God, this day we come humbly before you and ask your blessing upon our county and these county commissioners. In your goodness be present to our citizens and allies who are far from home and seeking safety. May our elected leaders make it their aim to do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly with you. Finally, dear Lord, give the members of this body passion for their cause, eloquence in debate, and respect for those with whom they disagree. Most especially, grant them, at the end of the day, the certain knowledge that they have served their county well. Amen.
Amen.
Well, good morning to each of you and welcome to those of our citizens that are in attendance and for those that may be viewing online, we welcome you this morning. I would ask for those that are in attendance with us, if you will, please make sure that your phones are on vibrate as we go through and conduct the people's business today. Commissioners, you have there before you an agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second to accept the agenda as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passed. Next item would be a public hearing on the CDBG in our closeout and I'm going to ask, is Mr. Chip Bartlet would come and give some opening comments. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you for having me, especially in your morning session. Yesterday, we have a closeout public hearing, basically a housekeeping item for our FY17 CDBG NR. Craven County was a recipient of this grant to assist low to moderate income homeowners that were impacted by Hurricane Matthew. In order to maintain compliance, we were required to hold a closeout public hearing once all program activities are complete. The activities included the rehabilitation and elevation of one low-income household at 125 Chip's Road in Vanceboro that had received flooding damage in Matthew. To date, we have received no written questions or comments from the citizens via the public notice in the newspaper. However, I will be glad to answer any questions during the public hearing. And also in regards to CDBG monies, as you may recall, the last time I was here, the county has applied, submitted another application for this next round of funding and we should probably know something in the first part of next year.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlet. Do we have a motion to open the public? I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by five, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand in public hearing. Are there any citizens that have signed up, Mr. Vice Chair?
No, sir.
All right. We would give any of our citizens that are present that desire to speak during this public hearing the opportunity.
May the motion go to public hearing.
All right. I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing and any discussion on the motion. Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're back now to the board. Mr. Bartlet, do you have any closing comments or anything you need to share with us?
Yes, sir. That's pretty much it for a closeout public hearing.
We thank you so much for your attendance today.
Thank you.
The next item is the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have there before you the minutes of the November 1st, 2021 regular session, the tax releases and refunds, the adoption of the records, retention and disposition schedules for programs and general records, economic development requests to set a public hearing for Project Whale on December the 6th, 2021 at 7:00 p.m., another request to set a public hearing for Project Drum on December the 6th, 2021 at 7:00 p.m., and then the ABC travel policy. Are there any items that the commissioners desire to remove from the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here and Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you. We're honored this morning to have members of the ABC Board here with us and staff who are going to make their annual report to us and we asked at this time if the chairman of that board, Mr. Chip Chagrin, would come forward and I know you're going to introduce those in attendance too. So, welcome.
I will, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. It's an honor to be here, as chairman and members. It's always great to come see you and yes, we have several of the folks and we'll get to them in a second here. My, I have the second slide there or I don't see the little thingy here.
I think they'll do it for you if you just tell them when you're ready.
Okay. Next slide, please. There you go. For our newest member of board, there's our mission statement, ma'am. I know that the rest of the commissioners are well familiar with it, but it just brings your attention the aspect of the ABC, the most important part, Craven County, is the controlling aspect and then follow on with the others. So, we like to think we do a great job on that. Everything that we do flows from that mission statement. All the monies that we apply, all of our efforts flow to that, directly to that mission statement. Next slide, please. And yes, I am proud to welcome Ms. Creighton. Thank you, ma'am, for being with us today. Ms. Carroll, appreciate it. Our general manager, Paul Brown, and our chief financial officer with us today, Esther Patterson. So, thank you all. We have a new member and you may be familiar with Kenny Morris III. He's a newest member on the board and the other members, one of them is to my immediate right, Mr. Booker. So, we have two members here today. We also have today about 32 people working for us in the Craven County ABC Board and they also send their best regards. Next slide, please. So, we've had a busy year, board. We had a busy year. We've, like you, had to cope with COVID up front and very personal. The governor said that we were an essential business, so we would not close the, but for two days. We did have one case, our employee was directly involved with COVID. We had to shut the store down and completely clean all the bottles in that store and in all the bags, so you can imagine that. We have had another employee that did have COVID, but it was at home at the time and passed the three or four days, so we did not have to go through all those protocols. But we've had some good news. We've worked hard, James City. Last year, we promised the board that we would apply some funding to that store and get it to look first class, which we have. We expanded 33%. I believe it's one of the finest stores in North Carolina, certainly, and we invite all of you to come by and visit us. Don't make a purchase, but we like that, but just identify yourself to the manager and they'll give you your pictures are in the back and they're familiar with you, but please come by and see the store. Havelock, we also had upgrades. We've had the floor completely done in Havelock and in the back room. So, some of it you may not see, that's why you'd have to go see the manager, but we never had a galley back there, there was no area for them to eat. So, now all of our stores have a galley and a proper place for folks to sit down and have a break. You'll notice when you come into our stores, all new lighting. They're very bright, very cherry in the Craven County stores and very safe. We expanded, we expanded our security services this year. Of course, we have the deputies of Craven County who work alongside ALE agents to provide that level of security and you can be assured that you have one of the safest ABC boards in North Carolina, thanks to them. So, where we are, we can tell you that we've had another little problem along the way that you're familiar with, you hear about it all the time, and that's global interruption. You know, when you look at our business, we get about 30 to 40% of it is imports. Most of the gins, quite a few of the vodkas, the liqueurs, Scotch, obviously, all come from other places and these other places have had some real problems. The cognacs especially were hit in France. Even today, 22% last week of the Hennessy Company had COVID. So, that's an example. So, we have that issue, plus we have the issue of the bottles, the cardboard, the caps. We're seeing a lot of strange things come in, different colored caps that we're used to, bottles that we haven't seen, but we get by all that and we're working, we're working with it. At one time here about two months ago, we were down to about 42, 43% inventory. Through your ABC Board, working very closely with the industry, doing direct shipments from the distillers, which is legal in North Carolina, we just notify the state and getting truckloads delivered, we have offset quite a bit of that. We're back on the road and we're back up to about 80, 82% and we expect it frankly to not get much better now until spring. Probably going to be about 82 to 85%. So, we will have shortages along the way and we will tell you that is the policy of the Craven County ABC Board, this board with a lot of thought. When it comes to splitting the solemn and the baby and yet a case of allocated alcohol, frankly, we're going to give that case to our liquor-by-the-drink customers. They suffered quite a bit, as you well know. We try to, at the expense of having our front door customers perhaps a little angry at us, but we've made a conscious decision to try to help our tourism out by giving, giving the liquor-by-the-drink folks when we have the shortages. So, we will, you may hear that from both parties. We will tell you that yes, that's a policy that your board has and we still don't have enough to give to everybody. Next slide, please. So, where are we going this year? And we've heard about last year and we'll tell you about that. We're going to discuss this morning, right after this meeting, with our liquor-by-the-drink folks, a program that we've been looking at for the longest time here, about a year. But because of the situation, we've not wanted to have to institute still another change and that is a centralized distribution point for our liquor-by-the-drink customers. We're going to dedicate a portion of our warehouse as a store for the liquor-by-the-drink and we are going to be commencing here in January deliveries from our store to their door, deliveries on a scheduled basis, which we think is fair and equitable. It's good for both parties and that way our stores will no longer have a split mission, the back door and the front door. And it's caused some issues over the years and particularly now, we are getting more folks coming through the front door than we ever had. About two years ago, I briefed this board and told you that about 18% of our business was liquor-by-the-drink. I'll give you comparison to, so you'll know, Carteret County is 35%. You can imagine they have all the beach, the beach crowd. So, this year, our liquor-by-the-drink accounts for 13%. That's because the front door, folks in Craven County have increased their buying, but they frankly have been buying upscale items. We always knew that about Craven County, but it is, it is true. We have much more middle up, top shelf purchases and we sell frankly to a lot of zip codes from out of, out of our area, Raleigh area, people coming down to the beach perhaps, people coming, tourism in there. They like our stores. It's a good problem to have. So, we're doing a lot more business in the front. We need to pay attention to that. We need more space in the front and that's why you'll see James City, 33%. The downtown store, we have put $350,000 in that store between the front part of it falling into Front Street here almost last year and the store now, which would be a grand reopening here in about two weeks, that store has expanded 35%. So, you're going to see a much larger store there. So, we're really going quite, quite forward here and then of course, what we have working with us is the Bridgeton Store. Bridgeton Store, all the permits have been pulled, they have been all approved. The plans have been developed. That package, the bid package will be going on the street probably in about four to five weeks and that 60 days and then we'll award a contract on that in 11, about 11 months, 10, 11 months from that award a contract, that store will be opening up. That store, I should say campus, because it's a campus. On one side is going to be the new warehouse and on the far side will be the new store and both of them will be state of the art. It's always been the intention of this board that when that happens, that we offer our present warehouse to Craven County for needs that may be at that time. So, those plans are going forward and we're on target. Our architect tells us we're on target and we have several folks that want to be in this bid package because this is going to be a very unique store for North Carolina and very unique campus. I would be very remiss if I didn't talk about our wonderful employees. They have to have gone through living hell on this, this COVID thing, folks coming through the door with the shortage thing, kind of very angry at them. We burn more telephones. I can tell you this year, as the chairman, I've received more, more telephone calls than I had my, the five years as the chair. Hey, boy, it's, some of them are unkind, some don't understand, you know, trying to make them understand, this is, how come I can go here? How come I can, we hear that. General manager, we, general manager, I, one day decided we're going to go visit other counties in our neighborhood, you know, so I've visited a couple, I visited Lanier and he and I visited Carteret. We found all these things, my friends, to be not true. Everybody is suffering through this thing and they're all, they're all low on product. So, we have given our employees a raise this year beyond the cost of living raised. We had to do this because our industry, you can see it clearly, the signs, $15 an hour working Mickey D's or something. I mean, we're trying to ask people to sell, yes, we do have $1,800 bottles of alcohol and we do sell them. To make purchases of that and have an understanding of our business and we just couldn't get folks that we were paying them, even though we were, we were doing well up to that point, things have changed and the board has seen this and has answered the call. So, we're taking care of our people, we're taking care of our stores. We had our audit this year, which I'm going to be rendering onto you, sir, and it says once again that your Craven County ABC store is one of the best in North Carolina and has been, medium-sized stores is in the top three, so you don't have that problem. Okay, next slide, please. So, this is where we want to go and it's really actually small. The stores now, there's still a few things, we want to do floors here and a few lights there, but the five-year modernization program for all, for all intents and purposes will be complete with the downtown store and we'll just be doing some other things. You know, we're working with the sheriff's department and we've instituted, this may be crazy, but people do crazy things in front of ABC stores, even though the law says that you can be, it's like the school, you know, if you do drugs in front of a school, it's a bigger impact on your chances of going to jail. Well, it's the same thing with ABC store and we have put new cameras in our ABC stores and outside the stores and one side of these cameras will identify cars, license plates in a matter of seconds. It's called FLOCK and it will identify license plates that are, there's warrants out for individuals' arrests and we have already, already, we just instituted and already made to arrest outstanding severe warrants, the people coming through. So, the safety's been upgraded even further with that, with this FLOCK. The other thing that we've done, we're working with sheriff's department with the, we've reinstituted the deer program and we're going to be going to the first graduation class here of the kids to make sure that that's where we try to stop the bad habits. And we're working with the Boys and Girls Club. We've awarded a grant for the Boys and Girls Club. So, we're out in your communities on a different level, not just, you know, doing this and in keeping with the law, we're continuing to give Craven County a larger share of money dedicated for the use that you may see fit, which we've been, to believe is going to be going down to the clinic down at Jacksonville. Next slide, please. So, here's where we are and if you're in the business world, this is a very nice slide. This shows some very steady growth and I know we have several businessmen and women here today. That is a, that is a good slide to have and that tells you that the, the increased sales means that, that the state of North Carolina is getting some increased money and the county of Craven. Next slide, please. So, here's our tail of the bottle, if you will, that gives you a little bit more detail of that and it's kind of a giveaway here. I, I like to think, when you see the, the aspect, you're zeroing in on that $1.291 million for Craven County, please make sure you drop your eyes a little bit lower because we give other checks to Craven County, they're just made out with the memo to different parts of Craven County, but it, these are all cost avoidance to our taxpayers and, you know, when you lay out the bill, when you lay out paying folks, that's $80,000, $100,000 that you didn't have to write out. So, really, Craven County is quite a benefactor, as long, and the cities and towns this year, $143,000 are going to go to, obviously, New Bern is the principal, has two stores, Havelock is doing rather well and even little Vanceboro is going to get a check this year, you know, so we've had a very good year and so there we are. Next slide, please. So, having said that, Mr. Chairman, I hand off as required under the laws and general statutes, that my appointing authority get a copy of our audit, but probably more important is this check today for $1,044,459.95, knowing that you'll, you'll spend it wisely, Jack, I'm sure. And who would like to get this, sir? Is that what it is, sir? You have a million dollar check in hand?
I'll touch it.
There you go, sir. Thank you very much. Once again, we appreciate the opportunity to come before the board and we thank you very much for your support. That's very important as we go forward and we have continued support from this board. Thank you very much.
Any questions for, yes, Commissioner Line?
Chip, could you get into detail a little bit more about your delivery service?
Okay, sir. Delivery service is going to be based upon the present need. Everybody will have at least one free delivery and I say the free because the state of North Carolina does say in that statute that allows this. By the way, this is a statute driven, not something that we just necessarily thought of. I'd love to say we thought of it, but it came out in the North Carolina ABC Commission requirement that we have offer this, this service. So, we're going to do it free. We're not going to charge them. They, they pay enough money as it is. Everybody's going to get at least one, sir, even the smaller groups will, will have an opportunity. The larger deliveries twice a week free. There are folks, you have one down in your community, a Mexican restaurant that gets 250 cases a month and they do it once a month. They don't want it anymore, once a month. Wow. So, we're going to tailor as much as we can to their needs. We're going to discuss that with the liquor-by-the-drink folks today. They're going to have, having a workshop. Everybody's been invited to these workshops, so we believe it's going to be a fair and equitable situation. We, you know, I just said, we can't continue on what we're going. We have some of them, very bad habits, 14 orders a week. We have one, 18 orders a week, three, four, five a day, come in and get two. We lose money. You know, I have to stop somebody from doing something, I got to go in the back room. My burden rate on an employee is about $28 an hour and their backs there with three bottles of Aristocrat, we, we lose, we lose a lot of money sometimes, sir, so we, but they're all going to play, they're all going to have an opportunity to sit the table and give us their input.
Can we get a list of who the attendees are at your meeting today?
Absolutely, sir.
If you could, please.
And I start, Ms. Smith, ma'am?
Yes. I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
The first one addresses the, the increase that you stated was a good thing and it is depending on how we look at it, but does this mean we are serving more people? Does it mean people are drinking? Does it mean people are drinking more?
No, not necessarily, ma'am. We are certainly having an increase, but in sales. People coming through the door is actually less. They're buying, what they're doing, they're not buying the lower end. They're tending to buy, you know, one bottle of a high end, and that's...
So, they're buying better alcohol?
Yes, ma'am.
So the...
And they're buying fewer bottles. Craven County is way behind the state when it comes to that. We see it every month. The board sees the, sees, you know, what our sales are, and, no. But Craven County, it's, we have a big retirement community. They don't drink a whole bunch of alcohol, but when they do go out, they get an eighteen-year Scotch, you know. They tend to do that. But no, they're not buying more bottles. We do sell a lot of bottles. I'm not gonna tell you we don't. We sell about 340,000 bottles a year.
My next question is about individuals purchasing alcohol.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that when a person goes to a restaurant, and they're obviously drinking too much or drunk, it's the responsibility of the restaurant owner or server to stop service?
Yes, ma'am.
They would not serve them more than they can handle. Do you have any responsibility if a person is continuously coming in, you know, buying a bottle every day, two or three bottles a day, or whatever, do you have any authority or any responsibility in those sales?
No, ma'am. Here's where our responsibility lies. Make sure, obviously, they're 21. Make sure they're not under any appearance of influences of alcohol, making sure that...
Well, if they're under the influence, you don't sell.
Oh, no, ma'am. We don't, we don't sell.
That's what I was about.
Yes, ma'am. We do it. And we have the sheriff's folks right in the back room to make sure. And they're watching on a camera, and they see somebody showing signs of, our people are trained. We have a zero tolerance for selling underage. If any of our associates sell one bottle to a, they are immediately fired. Yeah, we pay attention to that. And we also, ma'am, sponsor a bar, it's called Bars Course, with our ALE agents. And they teach bar people how to watch for this, how to serve, make sure they're not over-serving. That's what it's called in the business. Thank you, ma'am, for your questions.
Any other questions from the board?
I'd like to make a statement. The change in the ABC Board happened, I believe, as I remember, in 2011, because I was here. At that time, the county was receiving about 250,000 dollars a year, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And now, we're receiving a million dollars a year. That's great. The other part I like about it is that liquor, the price of liquor has increased, not because of the number of people buying it, because of the volume and the price that we're selling our liquor at today. In addition to that, a portion of this money is going to the schools, which helps the sheriff and the enforcement people in the liquor store business. I think another thing, and Chip uses here, and Chip and I in 2011 discussed Vanceboro as a store that we probably have to look at because it was not running in the black. And right now, Vanceboro is running in the black. So, I think overall, that the ABC Board has improved 100% over what we took over in 2011. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Chagman, we thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Chair Creighton, thank you for being here. Paul, thank you both.
Thank y'all for coming.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda is the redistricting and adoption resolution, and I'm gonna ask if County Manager will come forward. Good morning, sir.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I think it may be appropriate if I read the resolution into the record and then ask the board if they have any feedback. So, this is Attachment Four on your agenda. Resolution of the Craven County Board of Commissioners adopting new electoral district boundaries. Whereas the Craven County Board of Commissioners is authorized and obligated under North Carolina General Statute 153A22 to revise its county district boundaries to correct any population imbalances as shown by the federal census. And whereas the seven-member Board of County Commissioners includes seven commissioners elected from seven districts. And whereas the electoral districts are subject to the constitutional and statutory requirement of one person, one vote. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners has received and reviewed the population of its districts as determined by the 2020 federal census. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners has determined that the population of its districts is out of balance, and the boundaries of the districts need to be altered to provide equal representation. And whereas, on October 4th, 2021, the Board of County Commissioners, meeting in public, selected criteria to guide the redistricting process and thereafter adopted seven guiding principles to be used in redistricting. And whereas, on October 18th, 2021, the Board of County Commissioners received proposed redistricting plans identified as Option A and Option B. Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners requested an additional proposed redistricting plan identified as Option C. Whereas, on November 1st, 2021, the Board of County Commissioners held a public hearing to review and consider proposed redistricting plans identified as Option A, Option B, and Option C. And whereas, meeting in public session on November 15th, 2021, the Board of County Commissioners considered and approved the redistricting plan identified as Option C, a copy of which is attached here, too. And whereas, the redistricting plan approved by the Board of County Commissioners and presented in public satisfies the statutory and constitutional one-person, one-vote requirements. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Craven County Board of Commissioners as follows. One, the boundaries of the five electoral districts for Craven County are altered to follow the lines depicted on the attached redistricting plan identified as Option C. The attached plan has been prepared from United States Census Bureau maps, and the boundaries have been drawn to follow census block lines. A list of the census blocks in each district is attached for reference and resolving issue that might arise concerning the boundaries of the districts. Three, the new district boundaries shall be used for the next election of the members of the Board of County Commissioners and for each subsequent election until the boundaries are altered according to law. Four, a copy of the resolution with exhibits and the maps showing the district boundaries shall be retained in the office of the clerk to the Board of County Commissioners. Five, a copy of this resolution with exhibits shall be provided to the Craven County Board of Elections with the request that the Board of Elections notify residents of applicable changes in the districts in which they vote. Number six, not later than ten days after the day of adoption of this resolution, the clerk shall file in the Secretary of State's office and in the Office of the Craven County Registered Deeds a certified copy of the resolution. Seven, a resolution adopted pursuant to this section shall be the basis of electing persons to the Board of County Commissioners at the first general election for members of the Board of Commissioners occurring after the resolution's effective date and thereafter. Eight, the resolution shall become effective upon its adoption, adopted by the Craven County Board of Commissioners on this 15th day of November, 2021.
Okay, Commissioners, you've heard it. Questions? Commissioner Lynam?
Number one?
Yes, sir. I called it. As I said, it's supposed to be seven. My apologies. That got through from the consultant. I didn't, I didn't catch it. That is correct, though. So, with that modification, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you've heard that one modification on line one. It would be the boundaries of the seven electoral districts. Okay, other questions, concerns?
Chairman, I would make a motion. To adopt the resolution.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution of the Craven County Board of Commissioners for adopting new electoral district boundaries. Discussion from the board. Hear none. Discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you.
Jack, one question I would have, just for our information and for the public. So, what's the process now? So, with this document, where does it go?
Yes, sir. So, refer to number five and six of the resolution. Five basically states that we'll share it with the Craven County Board of Elections, and then they will notify citizens of the change. Now, realize they're gonna have to notify people of a lot of other changes as well, the folks that are doing redistricting. Melanie will be before you here in just a few minutes to talk to you about that. Second, we have to file it with the Secretary of State, which makes it official, and also with the Registered Deeds here in Craven County. And then from that point forward, filing will open with the new districts in December.
And I know Ms. Melanie, when she gets here, she'll go into a little bit more detail.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes.
When will the maps be updated on GIS and all this?
Version C will go just today. Now that you've adopted it, that'll be shown. Yep.
Other questions?
Thank you, Jack.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, next on the departmental matters, we have Social Services. We've got several budget amendments. Mr. Jeffrey Merritt, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. We do have several budget amendments. The first being on your agenda, we are rolling forward funds from last fiscal year from our senior programs, the meals programs and the sunshine program. These funds are ones that are donated funds from clients, you know, that they can have the opportunity to give back to the program for the meals that they receive through it. And our sunshine program, although we weren't able to do, run that program as much as we would like to last year due to COVID, that is our respite program where we do give caretakers of individuals with cognitive illnesses such as Alzheimer's and dementia, when they're still able to be maintained at home sometimes at our facilities so that they're able to go and, you know, do their daily, do daily needs of the household, which are oftentimes very difficult to do when you're caring for someone with that type of illness. So, we're asking that you please roll forward the amount of 25,712 dollars. And we do use those funds to put back into the program, and that's why we have to carve those out.
Chairman, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to a budget amendment amount of 25,712 dollars. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, Dee.
Our second budget amendment is in relation to adoption promotion funds. These funds are ones that we receive when we are, the state sets a baseline for the number of adoptions that we're supposed to meet each year, or there are special adoptions such as sibling groups, things such as that, where these adoption promotion funds are given to counties if they meet those baselines or adopt, you know, children in sibling groups or other special categories. And we have to use these funds to promote adoption programs or promote, try to recruit adopted families. So, we are asking to roll this money forward of 21,548 dollars, and that's the budget either this year.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
A second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the budget amendment in amount of 21,548 dollars. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
C.
Our third amendment is related to the American Rescue Plan Act and funding that we receive to offset food nutrition services administrative funding. Those positions are funded 50% federally, 50% county, and with the American Rescue Plan Act, the state determined to reimburse the counties for some of that funding. Craven County was awarded 28,477 dollars, as you will see in the attachment. What we are asking is that that money be included in our budget. We plan to use some of that for, do some building modifications in our office to try to create some more office space. On our income maintenance unit side, we have an auxiliary desk that was being used at one point, but it's no longer being done, so we can create a couple more offices there, which is sorely needed. And we would use the rest to, you know, determine if we needed to contract any more employees as we, like everyone else, are, you know, kind of being hard-hit with, you know, labor shortages at this time, so.
Chairman, so moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in amount of 28,477 dollars. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, Dee.
And the last amendment, we came before you in September and where the state was allocating monies for children who have been in foster care and would be eligible for some special funding, a one-time allocation, like a stipend that we received through, you know, as all of us was eligible for through some of the recovery acts. And what our staff did is that we were able to go through our records and try to locate as many of those individuals who was eligible to receive those funds. We were able to find a number of individuals where we were able to give them all of the stipend that would have exceeded our original allocations. So, what we did is that we went back to the state and stated that we need this much more money in the event there was money left from that pool. There was money left from that pool from where all those who we were able to find would be able to be fully served with the amount which they're eligible for. And what happens is that the state notified us of that amount, and we are asking to put that in the budget so that we can distribute the funds to those, I won't say children, now adults, but in the amount of 41,320 dollars.
So moved.
Great. We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in amount of 41,320 dollars. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate you.
Thanks. Appreciate y'all. Have a good day.
Next, we have a budget amendment from the Sheriff's Department from International Paper. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to come before you today. We've got an item that we're looking to add to our budget. We applied for a grant with the International Paper Company, and we're awarded it in the amount of 5,000 dollars, and we're looking to use that for search and rescue equipment. Some of our immediate needs are a drone to assist with looking for folks, not only when they flee from us, but also when we're out trying to search for missing people as well. And night vision goggles so we can continue these operations in low light and dark times. Both of these items, we don't have. We have budgeted for them in the past, but they've never made the cut.
Okay. Any questions? Hear none. Do I have a motion? I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of 5,000 dollars. Any discussion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Sheriff, anything you got to share with us this morning?
I'd ask that you, once again, continue to keep Deputy Bellingham and your thoughts and prayers. He is improving some. It's very slowly. He's stated that the days are very long and hard. It's very strenuous on him and tough. But he is determined to get back to us. We still don't have a timeline. But we all look forward to having him back in our office in some capacity. And just ask that the public continues to support us in that process.
Any questions this morning for the sheriff? Captain Scott, good morning, sir. Glad to have you with us. Appreciate what both of you do.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day. All right, item seven would be economic development. To approve a budget amendment in the purchase agreement for infrastructure Phase III in the industrial park. Mr. Jeff Wood?
Chairman, how are you, Commissioners?
Morning.
Ready to report on our Phase III of our water extension onto the industrial park. This is predominantly around Lot 19. As you can see from the picture, we have a design that would allow us to maximize Lot 19 so that it wouldn't impede on any kind of development for the larger tracts that would be left after Project Drum and Project Well, which you heard about earlier from the public hearing. It also allows us to have another easement that would get to the cemetery, to our property, so we'd actually have two different options between that and the utility easement that actually goes south of the cemetery as well. Unfortunately, due to material costs increase, the lowest bid was Jimco Construction. However, the budget will need to be increased by 50,890 dollars to meet that requirement. Fortunately, some of that will be covered under Phase II. We had an infrastructure development fund grant. That came... That came under budget, which by the way was also under Jim Co Construction. So we do have $19,988.86 from last year's budget to add to this year's budget. Jim Co came in at the lowest bid. Vaughn Melton, our engineer, as well as purchasing, reviewed their bid packet and found them to be qualified to, to work on this project. And so I come in front of the board to ask for the budget amendment of $50,890 to include the cost increase and the grant revenue, and then also to allow the department to enter into purchase agreement with Jim Co Construction to finish phase three. This is an important phase. As you can see, it connects it to the northern part of the park, creating a loop, which will be important for not only Drum and Well, but the remaining 20-some acres of property for Lot 19 to provide things like sprinkler services.
All right, any questions for Mr. Wood?
Chairman, I would make a motion. We move on this. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and the motion is for the budget amendment and also for the other action items you see requested there. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Jeff, just one quick question. We're coming under the Highway 70. We obviously have water on this side of 70. Is it so that we, it's coming from both directions? What's the, what's the need to come under the highway?
So this will create a loop connecting both together.
That's what I want to make sure we understand.
Yep.
So we have a loop, so it's coming from both directions out.
And from my understanding from, from the City of New Berns Water Department, this will effectively be the last piece that we would need for our property in that area to, to deal with issues that we've had ongoing for quite some time.
Thank you, sir.
Good question. Any other questions? Any discussion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Miss Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next we have elections. Ms. Melanie Ray, good morning.
Good morning.
How you doing today?
I'm good. And I came before you this morning to request funds for us to be able to notify all active voters in Craven County of the redistricting changes, which we are required to do by law. Since filing starts December 6th, we have to get these cards out before then in case someone moves into a new district and wants to file in that district. Those that are changing, of course, of U.S. Congress is now District One, went from three, so this here made all the active voters be able to get cards. North Carolina Senate is now three, used to be two. North Carolina House, we used to have three in 13, which three was down here, I mean three in 79. Three was here, 79 was here. Now it's switched. Three is on top, and new district 13 is on the bottom. City of New Bern had about 1,500 addresses that were affected, and then the school board had some redistricting changes. I don't know the exact number on that, but the maps, I do have the maps. I do have maps for all of these, and GIS has set up our view so we can start seeing the changes. We can't start making changes until the state board certifies all the November elections that happened this year, so we have a small timeframe to get the changes made and get the voter cards out. Our goal is to have all the 60,000-plus voter cards mailed by December 3rd, and these are those funds to do that.
All right, any questions for Ms. Ray?
The school board redistricting, that's more in line with the county to redistricting now?
I, I don't know, because I just now have seen the map, so I don't know.
Ms. County Manager, you want to address it?
I think, Commissioner Mark, there's some changes, there's some differences between the school board and the county that they would not align. They, they chose some different criteria than the county commissioners did, which caused some, some subtle changes in certain areas and some more drastic changes in others. The biggest difference, I would think, Commissioner Liner would be in the Havelock, Commissioner McCabe, in, in that area down there, and probably the New Bern area as well.
And of course, their election's new this year as well. It's now partisan, and they run, the people who live in the district will, if there's a primary vote, for only people in that district, and then in November, the people in the district vote for their district rep, just like y'all. That's, they've changed that to follow your.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, here none.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in amount of $30,000. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Miss Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Melanie. Appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners next, you have the appointments. You have those appointments that are pending, are there any nominations from the floor for any of those? Here none, we will move to current. The first one, you have Craven County Recreation Advisory Council. Ms. Carolyn Squires from District Three seeks reappointment. Nominations from the floor.
I would reappoint.
All right, we, we have the nomination for Ms. Squires. Commissioner Smith?
I have not personally heard from her, but she did give, send information in that she is interested in continuing her position, and the department would like to have her, so I see no reason why she should not continue.
All right, we have that nomination. Are there any additional nominations? Here none, she will be accepted by acclamation. Coast City, Craven County Library Board, Ms. Teresa Hodges. She is eligible for reappointment. Madam Clerk, I would ask that the board would, I would nominate her and ask her that she be reappointed. Are there other nominations from the floor? Here none, she will be accepted by acclamation also. All right, you see the upcoming appointments there for December, the Juvenile Crime Prevention, Craven County Health Board, Infirmers Relief Board of Trustees. Any other appointments to consider this morning? All right, we'll go to County Attorney's Report. Mr. Eric Grady.
Mr. Chairman, I have no report this morning.
Okay, thank you, sir. County Manager's Report, Mr. Jack White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity again to be with you this morning. One item, and at your November 1st meeting, you were made aware that Leslie Young has started as a interim tax assessor, mainly because Mr. Antry's going to be here until November the 30th. To make this transition, when his retirement takes place on November 30th, the board will need to take action today to appoint Leslie Young as the tax assessor effective December 1st, 2021 at midnight, to fulfill the vacated term of Ronnie Antry.
So moved. Okay, we have a motion and a second. The request is, you've heard it from the County Manager, any discussion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, call the roll on this, please.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Miss Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, B. Our second budget amendment is in relation to adoption promotion funds. These funds are ones that we receive when we are, the state sets a baseline for the number of adoptions that we're supposed to meet each year, or there are special adoptions such as sibling groups, things such as that, to where these adoption promotion funds are given to counties if they meet those baselines or adopt, you know, children in sibling groups or other special categories. And we have to use these funds to promote adoption programs or promote, try to recruit adopted families. So we are asking to roll this money forward of $21,548 last budget either this year.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. A second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the budget amendment in amount of $21,320. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Miss Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, D.
And the last amendment, we came before you in September, and where the state was allocating monies for children who have been in foster care and would be eligible for some special funding, a one-time allocation like a stipend that we received through, you know, as all of us was eligible for through some of the recovery acts. And what our staff did is that we were able to go through our records and try to locate as many of those individuals who were, who was eligible to receive those funds. We were able to find a number of individuals to where we were able to give them all of the stipend that would have exceeded our original allocations. So what we did is that we went back to the state and stated that we need this much more money in the event there was money left from that pool. There was money left from that pool from where all those who we were able to find would be able to be fully served with the amount which they're eligible for. And what happens is that the state notified us of that amount, and we are asking to put that in the budget so that we can distribute the funds to those, I won't say children, now adults, but in the amount of $41,320.
So moved. Right, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in amount of $41,320. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Miss Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next we have elections. Ms. Melanie Ray, good morning.
Good morning.
How you doing today?
I'm good. And I came before you this morning to request funds for us to be able to notify all active voters in Craven County of the redistricting changes, which we are required to do by law. Since filing starts December 6th, we have to get these cards out before then in case someone moves into a new district and wants to file in that district. Those that are changing, of course, of U.S. Congress is now District One, went from three, so this here made all the active voters be able to get cards. North Carolina Senate is now three, used to be two. North Carolina House, we used to have three in 13, which three was down here, I mean three in 79. Three was here, 79 was here. Now it's switched. Three is on top, and new district 13 is on the bottom. City of New Bern had about 1,500 addresses that were affected, and then the school board had some redistricting changes. I don't know the exact number on that, but the maps, I do have the maps. I do have maps for all of these, and GIS has set up our view so we can start seeing the changes. We can't start making changes until the state board certifies all the November elections that happened this year, so we have a small timeframe to get the changes made and get the voter cards out. Our goal is to have all the 60,000-plus voter cards mailed by December 3rd, and these are those funds to do that.
All right, any questions for Ms. Ray?
The school board redistricting, that's more in line with the county to redistricting now?
I, I don't know, because I just now have seen the map, so I don't know.
Ms. County Manager, you want to address it?
I think, Commissioner Mark, there's some changes, there's some differences between the school board and the county that they would not align. They, they chose some different criteria than the county commissioners did, which caused some, some subtle changes in certain areas and some more drastic changes in others. The biggest difference, I would think, Commissioner Liner would be in the Havelock, Commissioner McCabe, in, in that area down there, and probably the New Bern area as well.
And of course, their election's new this year as well. It's now partisan, and they run, the people who live in the district will, if there's a primary vote, for only people in that district, and then in November, the people in the district vote for their district rep, just like y'all. That's, they've changed that to follow your.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, here none.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in amount of $30,000. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Miss Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Melanie. Appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners next, you have the appointments. You have those appointments that are pending, are there any nominations from the floor for any of those? Here none, we will move to current. The first one, you have Craven County Recreation Advisory Council. Ms. Carolyn Squires from District Three seeks reappointment. Nominations from the floor.
I would reappoint.
All right, we, we have the nomination for Ms. Squires. Commissioner Smith?
I have not personally heard from her, but she did give, sent information in that she is interested in continuing her position, and the department would like to have her, so I see no reason why she should not continue.
All right, we have that nomination. Are there any additional nominations? Here none, she will be accepted by acclamation. Coast City, Craven County Library Board, Ms. Teresa Hodges. She is eligible for reappointment. Madam Clerk, I would ask that the board would, I would nominate her and ask her that she be reappointed. Are there other nominations from the floor? Here none, she will be accepted by acclamation also. All right, you see the upcoming appointments there for December, the Juvenile Crime Prevention, Craven County Health Board, Infirmers Relief Board of Trustees. Any other appointments to consider this morning? All right, we'll go to County Attorney's Report. Mr. Eric Grady.
Mr. Chairman, I have no report this morning.
Okay, thank you, sir. County Manager's Report, Mr. Jack White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity again to be with you this morning. One item, and at your November 1st meeting, you were made aware that Leslie Young has started as a interim tax assessor, mainly because Mr. Antry's going to be here until November the 30th. To make this transition, when his retirement takes place on November 30th, the board will need to take action today to appoint Leslie Young as the tax assessor effective December 1st, 2021 at midnight, to fulfill the vacated term of Ronnie Antry.
So moved. Okay, we have a motion and a second. The request is, you've heard it from the County Manager, any discussion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, call the roll on this, please.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Miss Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you. All right, Commissioners reports. Commissioner Mark, we'll start with you this morning.
Okay. Start with the hospital. I haven't gotten a report this morning from Ray, but as of last Friday, we only had six people that were COVID-related in the hospital, two were in ICU and in intubators, and we had no deaths. Senator TDA Board meeting on last week, and some of the numbers, in September of 2020, we only had taken in 121,395, and as of December, September of 2021, we've taken in 207,982, which is an increase of $86,500. And I do credit a good part of it to Convention Center being renovated, and I think that the advertising gentlemen that are there are doing a good job. So I, I think that was a pretty good meeting. Fairfield Harbor, Foley, who was taking care of boats in Fairfield Harbor, one of the boats sank, and a lot of the stuff from the boat has come up above, and that's been taken care by Fairfield Harbor. However, I was contacted by Wildlife. Wildlife said that it's going to take about three years before they can remove the boat. So I've been in contact with, I've written to a gentleman by the name of Ben Solomon, Solomon, who was in charge of that area. I haven't heard from him yet, but I spoke to Senator Sanderson, and he said he would get involved with me on it, get the boat removed a little bit faster. And that's about it.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner McCabe?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Smith?
If, if your boat sinks, you have no responsibility in getting it out of the water?
I have no idea about the responsibility. All I know is Foley's boat went down, and it's up to the state, I guess, to remove it. Is that correct, Mr. County Manager?
Commissioners, it is, this whole topic has been a burr under everybody's saddle in this part of the world for a long time, particularly since Florence. I recall the county had to attend to cleaning up barges in the Trent River after the construction of, of the new bridges some years ago. There are criminal statutes for abandoning vessels in what I will loosely term public trust waters. The problem is finding the individuals and serving them, and, you know, using that process, we find that when somebody abandons a boat, they are very careful to remove anything that would identify them. They'll grind off the whole identification number, they'll remove the registration, you name it. So it, it is something that we can address if we find the owner.
The boats are not insured. People don't insure boats?
People can insure boats. I don't believe it's a legal requirement as it would be with a motor vehicle. I, I think there was a, maybe the Coastal Federation had a grant, and they cleaned up, you know, 200 boats in this part of the world over the last year or two, and it's just a, it's just an awful problem that there's no practical solution to.
Mr. Attorney, did that have something to do with Florence because of the hurricane, that it wasn't really responsive of the person that owned the boat?
Yes, sir. And I will say, anecdotally, the, the number absolutely increased after Florence, almost exponentially. You all may remember there were a couple of boats anchored right off Union Point Park for, for a while until fairly recently, and I know in Carteret County, they, they've had a time also, you know, those boats sink and people just walk away. It's interesting, some of these folks live on their boats, so they really don't have any place to find them. They'll go buy another boat and, you know, keep on to wherever they're going, so it's a, a set of folks that can be hard to locate even if you are able to get wrecked ownership information.
All right, Commissioner McCabe?
But you, I don't have anything to report this time.
All right, Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I would like to thank all the citizens, the communities, and organizations around Craven County for their recognition and celebration of Veterans Day last Thursday, and also to all the elected officials who came to the Veterans Day lunch at Temple Baptist on Thursday at 11:00. And some of our people here helped serve our veterans, and that was most appreciated.
Excuse me, Chair. I was wondering if something that, it'd be a veteran to attend it, the very thing. The Atlanta school could have went?
Well, yes, but many of us who were there were also serving, so.
I'm not serving, but I'm saying, it said that only veterans allowed to come in, and you got to ID, so that's one reason I didn't show up.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Liner?
All right, just piggyback on Commissioner Mitchell's comments. I mean, we had a good turnout. We had over 200 people show up for the luncheon. Appreciate those who did attend and come out, and I appreciate this board for what it's did over the past couple of years on supporting the Veterans Council and Jeff on putting on this luncheon. So I thank all of y'all for getting that done. And I talked to Vice Chair at the meeting and everything else. Within a 50-mile radius of New Bern, of our vet center here, we've got 78,297 vets.
Good luck.
In a 50-mile radius. We're number three in the state for funds coming in from the federal government to support the vets, the amount of money that's coming in. So we're, we're doing good things here for our vets. We've got some other programs that Jack and I are working on, trying to get, coming in here as a, as a pilot program with the VA. So I thank all of you for what you've done to step up to.
It's good.
Put up on our vets. Other than that, Mr. Chair, that's it, sir.
And we thank you, Commissioner Liner and Commissioner Mitchell. Y'all stood up and fought for the vets in this county and surrounding areas, and helped make our Veterans Office what it is today. Definitely you had cooperation from your colleagues, but thank you both for your leadership. Commissioner Smith?
I really don't have anything, but I, I would like to thank our veterans for their service and thank our citizens for their support of veterans.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Chair Booker?
Yeah, I hate to continue this discussion longer than we need to, but I, at the veterans' luncheon, it was heartwarming to see one veteran there, I believe from World War II. There aren't many of those folks left there. I read someplace that we lose about 1,000 a day, World War II veterans, and there was one gentleman there from World War II. There are a number of others that were there with walkers, with people assisting them, and it, it was just a heartwarming day to see all these people who have fought for our country, served our country, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. So again, thank you to all the veterans in our county and beyond who have served. And that point that Commissioner Liner just made about how many there are located in our region, it's, it's really a great thing that we have all these veterans living in our area. So again, thanks to everybody that, that served.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioners, just, I know we've got a full week this week, a lot of us with meetings and everything, but Friday at 3:00 PM is the 90th anniversary of our airport. All of you, I think, have been invited to attend. Congressman Murphy will be here, will be our guest, kind of, if you want to say, our guest speaker for that occasion. It's going to be a great day, so a lot to be proud of about our airport, and so I ask you, please, if you're able to attend, please put that on your calendars. And on behalf of the towns of Dover and Coast City, we've got some Christmas parades going to occur this year. The mayors of both respective towns have asked me to extend invitations to you. I know that in your individual communities, you will have some going on also, but I'll get the clerk to send those out, but Dover's will be December 11th, Coast City's will be December the 12th. All right, anything else to bring before? Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I should have mentioned that our Deputy Bellingham, who's in Atlanta in rehab, there've been a number of fundraisers for him. A lot of money has been raised, but we're going to need a lot of money because, speaking of the sheriff, when he comes back, if he's not able to walk on his own, and at this point, nobody knows, but it's still very possible that he'll be in a wheelchair. He's going to have to have a modification of his apartment or house, whatever, you know, counter levels, all that kind of thing. So we hope that people will continue to be generous and, and do that, and also continue to send cards to him with well-wishing so that he can, I just feel like he's down there alone. I know he got a lot of cards initially, but then probably they've tended to stop. So we need to keep that going. If, if you haven't done so, send him a card and let him know that you appreciate what he has done for our county.
Thank you. Very well put. Commissioners, I wish each of you a happy Thanksgiving. I don't think we'll be back together as a board until after Thanksgiving. Our next meeting will be the first meeting in December, but I hope y'all have a wonderful time with family and friends. Nothing else to come before the Board of Commissioners? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned.
you got to do ID. So that's one reason I didn't show up.
All right. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Liner?
Sir, I just piggyback on Commissioner Mitchell's comments. I mean, we had a good turnout. We had over 200 people show up for the luncheon. Appreciate those who did attend and come out, and I appreciate this board for what it's did over the past couple of years on supporting the Veterans Council and Jeff on putting on this luncheon. So I thank all of y'all for getting that done. And I talked to Vice Chair at the meeting and everything else. Within a 50-mile radius of New Bern, of our vet center here, we've got 78,297 vets.
Good luck.
In a 50-mile radius. We're number three in the state for funds coming in from the federal government to support the vets, of the amount of money that's coming in. So we're, we're doing good things here for our vets. We've got some other programs that Jack and I are working on, trying to get, coming in here as a, as a pilot program with the VA. So I thank all of you for what you've done to step up to.
It's good.
Put up on our vets. Other than that, Mr. Chair, that's it, sir.
And, and we thank you, Commissioner Liner and Commissioner Mitchell. Y'all stood up and fought for the vets, this county and surrounding areas, and helped make our Veterans Office what it is today. Definitely, you had cooperation from your colleagues, but thank you both for your leadership. Commissioner Smith?
I really don't have anything, but I, I would like to thank our veterans for their service and thank our citizens for their support of veterans.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Chair Booker?
Yeah. I hate to continue this discussion longer than we need to, but I, at the veterans luncheon, it was heartwarming to see one veteran there, I believe from World War II. There aren't many of those folks left there. I read someplace that we lose about 1,000 a day, World War II veterans, and there was one gentleman there from World War II. There are a number of others that were there with walkers, with people assisting them, and it, it was just a heartwarming day to see all these people who have fought for our country, served our country, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. So again, thank you to all the veterans in our county and beyond who have served. And that point that Commissioner Liner just made about how many there are located in our region, it's, it's really a great thing that we have all these veterans living in our area. So again, thanks to everybody that, that served.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioners, just, I know we've got a full week this week, a lot of us with meetings and everything, but Friday at 3:00 PM is the 90th anniversary of our airport.